This is the Monday, February 27, 2017, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody in the audience recording this meeting tonight? I represent it from the Winston Telegram Gazette. Thank you. Being no others, can we stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just push it down. Okay. Just sit on this. Oh, good. Perfect. Okay. It is not 7:10 yet, so we have our first hearing scheduled for 7:10. So can we, let's see. Can we move up the recommendation? Board of Selectmen, general items, vote recommendation on the March 28th, special town meeting.
Chairman, I'll move that we move up item 5A.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. This is the vote on the recommendations on the March 28th, excuse me, special town meeting, and we may vote recommendation to recommend approval, not recommend approval, defer to the petition, or take no position. So this is from schools for the special town meeting, so have we got somebody here from the schools?
We do. If you want to light up Joe Faye and Cecilia.
Yeah, Cecilia and Joe, you come up with you. This is us at the table here. That'd be great. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
And it's a special meeting for the projects at the school, so can you give us a little bit of an update on where you are?
Okay. Well, basically, we've been accepted into the program, and we've actually, we're putting out the bid. The bid opening is set for March 1st. Well, it's going on, it's being advertised for March 1st, it'll be available, and then the bids will come in. We're hoping to have the amount, the bids will be open prior to the meeting, so we will have the amount of what the actual cost of the roof will be.
Now, have you got an actual cost figure, or is that still an estimated figure?
Estimated cost.
It's still an estimated cost?
$10,000.
Okay.
The bids will be due on March 23rd.
Okay.
We'll have that, we'll have the high number then.
Okay. So this was kind of time pending.
Yes.
I wanted to get this done. That'd be great. Any board members got any questions on this tonight? Mrs. Goodrich?
Did you just say the bids will be due March 23rd?
Yes.
And so when will you award the bid?
We'll be opening on March 23rd.
Great. Okay, there's an expectation that you'll make that decision that day? Okay.
Okay.
Through the chair, if I just want to clarify.
Yes, please.
The reason that the timing of this is as it is is because we need to have the vote in place to award the contract. So town meeting needs to approve of the article in order to award the contract. But in order to give town meeting an accurate number of what the cost is, the bids had to be timed to come in right before town meeting. So the bids will come in right before town meeting, you'll have an exact number for the town meeting vote. Once town, if town meeting votes to approve of it, following town meeting vote after the eight-day waiting period, the contract can then be awarded. So it's anticipated it will be awarded approximately nine days after the town meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to make a motion to recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to recommend approval on the March 28th town meeting warrant. Are there any further discussion?
Should we specify what article, Mr. Chairman? We have three.
I'm sorry, I thought we were under Article II.
Yeah, it was under Article II, but, okay. And that'll make the correct.
Vote to recommend Article II.
Article II.
I'm sorry.
So the motion been made and seconded. Have you got anything else?
No, we don't.
Okay. Being nothing else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
And again, for those town meeting members and interested parties, March 28th, 2017, at 7 o'clock at the Auburn High School is a special town meeting, so please make every effort to attend. Okay, well, we're going to open it, we've got that, the first one, we're going to Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. open it.
You might want to take up Article III.
Okay.
And that's for May 2nd, and we're going to, when will we open that? Okay, yeah, and we can take up Article III while we're at it. That'd be great. Well, it's got vote to open the warrant, when will we open it? Thank you.
Make the motion to recommend, Mr. Chairman. Tonight.
That's tonight.
Second.
Okay, we'll open it for tonight, so we'll add that into the motion. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to recommend Article III. So any discussion? All those in favor? Is there any discussion?
Aye.
Being none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay. Now, on number two, a vote to close the May 2nd, 2017 annual town meeting warrant on
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Monday, March 13th, 2017. Okay. Yeah, let's see.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we close the warrant for the annual town meeting of March 2nd at 7:00 PM on Monday, March 13th, 2017.
Let's go to, well, I think we can even go to, let's see, the town meeting warrant Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Will that give us a suitable time for all departments to come back? for May 2nd, 2017, unless there's going to be a lot of discussion. So can we move up item 5C? Okay.
Through the chair, that is a two-week period, and we had also last week started
Don't move. Second.
Motion made and seconded, move up 5C. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
to notify all the department heads to notify their boards and commissions a week prior
Thank you. This is the May 2nd, 2017 annual town meeting warrant, not to be changed with the March
to this, that this meeting is taking place tonight.
Great.
So that is certainly an effect.
Terrific. Okay. 28th. So the motion been made and seconded. March 28th is a special town meeting, and we will have the annual town meeting on May All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 2nd. Thank you. First, we're going to vote to open the warrant for the May 2nd, 2017 annual town meeting. And, yeah, I guess we'll sneak one more. Can we do 5D? That's for gift acceptances.
Motion to move up 5D.
Is there a motion?
Second. Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we open the warrant for the May 2nd, 2017 annual
Motion move up item 5D. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And for tonight, we have, from the recreation, the William H. Reisner Foundation, $1,000 to the 2017 Independence Day celebration.
Chairman, finish your thought.
Is there a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept this donation with a letter of gratitude signed by the chair. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. By the clock over there, it looks funny to me, we'll go back to the original agenda. And the first one we're going to have under presentations and public hearings, because we do have no public comment tonight. The first one is the National Grid for pole location and conduit construction on Carriage Drive, and this is a continued hearing, and we also have the information in our packets for what this was. There was a hold on this from a lack of some questions being unanswered last time, so can we reopen a hearing?
Motion to reopen. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And, yeah, I guess we'll sneak one more. Can we do 5D? That's for gift acceptances.
Motion to move up 5D.
Second.
Motion move up item 5D. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And for tonight, we have, from the recreation, the William H. Reisner Foundation, $1,000 to the 2017 Independence Day celebration.
Chairman, finish your thought.
Is there a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept this donation with a letter of gratitude signed by the chair. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. By the clock over there, it looks funny to me, we'll go back to the original agenda. And the first one we're going to have under presentations and public hearings, because we do have no public comment tonight. The first one is the National Grid for pole location and conduit construction on Carriage Drive, and this is a continued hearing, and we also have the information in our packets for what this was. There was a hold on this from a lack of some questions being unanswered last time, so can we reopen, reopen a hearing?
Motion to reopen. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have a representative from National Grid here. Are there any questions?
So.
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we held this at our last meeting, because there were some questions specifically from a couple of abutters. I'm curious to know if you've had, because I don't see them here tonight, if you've had any discussions with the abutters, and if their questions were answered to their satisfaction.
Yes, so the, there was someone else representing National Grid last time. She actually made contact with one of the abutters, met her out on site, and answered the question she had regarding the pole location, I think it was, roughly how far the pole was going to be crossing the street.
Right.
It's about, I say it just off the top of my head, it's about like 70 feet. It's directly, it's 50 to 70 feet, it's directly across the street, and the only reason for that is because we can't be digging up the public way for the underground conduit crossing the street. So that one pole is just to avoid that, and then everything else will be underground, going in line with the public way.
Okay. Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, you know, I know that the abutters who spoke at the last meeting aren't here tonight. Do we know if they contacted anyone? They were aware that we were continuing this? We made that motion that night. That's correct. It was being continued. I just, not that I don't trust you, I just want to make sure that the abutters were contacted.
So what I was under, what I'm aware of is the, there was, I know of one, there was a lady who lived adjacent to where the pole was going, which was, she was concerned where it was, if there was trees, and that was the person that they met on site and answered all the one-on-one questions that she had.
That's great. Okay. Has anybody else come up with anything else? We'll see, none? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to close. Second.
Motion to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion to, for item 3A. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Now we go to item 3B, the presentation, the Mass Downtown Grant, Drury Square Final Report, and I'll turn this over to Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you through the chair to the board. This evening in your package, you have a copy of the final vision plan and design guidelines for Drury Square. As you know, we received a $10,000 grant from the Mass Downtown Initiative from the state to develop this, and we hired a consultant, Harryman, who did a great job working with the town on this. We did have a public meeting, and nice turnout at that. People who did turnout had a lot of great ideas. We gathered a lot of input and put it back into a draft form, circulated the draft form amongst us to make sure we incorporated all of the input from the residents and that this is the final project. If I can, I've asked Matt Winoy, our town planner, to come up and just give you a quick summary.
Mr. Winoy, would you like to come up and join us?
To present to you what you have in front of you, and for those who may not have seen this, it is available on our website, and, Matt, would it be easier for you to come up here?
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate you having me this evening. So as the town manager has pointed out, this is a grant study that was done for us. Now, the analysis of Drury Square is nothing new to the town of Auburn. This has been on the town's master plan dating back to the '60s, as I recognized, we'll call it downtown area, or at least a centralized area for commercial gathering for folks and businesses. So in the past, and as more recent as 2008, there had been some zoning bylaw proposals. I went to town meeting to try to help rezone and promote the economic vitality of Drury Square, and promote some other ideas to help make it look and feel like a business district. That didn't get through town meeting at that time, and that doesn't mean that we stopped our efforts in trying to focus on Drury Square and bring it out as Auburn's possible center. Now, this initiative has going in, having proposed zoning bylaws in the past with the help of some of you here today, as well as others that are not. In the past, the emphasis had been on the zoning. How can we change the zoning? How can we adjust the uses we want to see there versus the uses that aren't here yet? Try to bring things up to date. And through this study, it was learned by us through the consultant that it's more important for us now to focus on the civic vitality of this area, that being some of the, like, the streetscapes, the park, the pond, and you bring out some of these things with some uniform lighting or ornamental street decorations, so to speak. These are the things you want to do to promote the walkability of the area first. Sidewalks, ADA compliance, such items as this, widening with bike lanes, and these are the items that came to the forefront as part of this study. And I understand this was circulated in the packet in advance, and there's also some short-term, some long-term goals in here that include possible rezoning or promoting certain uses in these areas. Designated a couple of areas or parcels in town that could be considered for redevelopment, possible mixed-use areas too, where you can combine business and residential. But the big takeaway that I got from this, as well as the June 30th workshop, that is, by the way, available on the town website for review if anyone wishes to view it, that the civic enhancement of this area is something that seems to be the biggest first step, and a step that we're looking forward to taking. And I'm here tonight happy to answer any questions the board may have on the project.
Thanks, Matt.
Yep. Mr. Carpenter.
Very interesting reading. Thank you, guys, for doing all this work, and just a quick question as far as the waterway piece of this, and it probably feeds into the desire to have a swimming program in the town. The lake, of course, is rather polluted. Are there any grant opportunities, not only for perhaps this area, but also if the town were to move forward with a swimming program proposal?
Through the chair. Not that I've acknowledged yet, but we're certainly receptive to looking into that.
I can just ask one more question.
Sure.
What's the next step as far as some of the changes, as you say, the mixed use? Would that go to the zoning review committee next for them to take a look at it behind what they're already, it looks like they've been very busy in the very short time they've been working, so, okay.
Yes, sir. And through the chair, the zoning bylaw review committee has received a copy of this report, as well as some of, all of our other committees and boards will be receiving a copy of this report too. The zoning bylaw review committee met last week, so they've received a copy also. We talked about our focus following this upcoming annual town meeting, so we have some bylaws to present to the selectmen. And after that, such time, they're going to be putting their focus, at first, in with solar bylaws, that's become pretty prominent, and the next step is to focus on this initiative.
Thank you.
I did get a chance to go to that meeting, and it was pretty interesting, and there was a mix of people from all across the town, and one of the things that they did want to take a look at is kind of revitalization of Drury Square, is to kind of clean it up. I mean, the pond, the tall weeds that are down there, you can't see anything, to clean up along with, you know, the park down there, the gaudered park, and just make it a little bit more accessible from, even from the library side they're talking about coming across. And I think that, I think if you start to perk that back up and just make it a little bit more pleasurable to look at, I think that you might see a lot more people come forward, especially with the mall there, and have the, you know, it all cleaned up. I think people would be very happy to be there, and that was one of the big things that they did take a look at. But they also did take a look at some of, you know, the buildings at the Drury Square, and what kind of improvements, what kind of revisions they could make to buildings, what even along the sidewalks with planters, with flags, with banners, with lighting. There's a lot of things that were discussed, so, and this report does top off a lot of that, and it'll be interesting to see exactly how this goes and, you know, the schedule so we could see, actually start to see some of this go along. I think it'd be great for the town.
I agree. And, Mr. Chairman, just to further answer Mr. Carpenter's question, one of the other initiatives that we're taking here is that there's a state-funded transportation improvement project that DPW is working with the Mass, planning, the MPO with CMRBC, and that transportation improvement project is from essentially Youngsheng Walshav to Central Square, the road crossing is, it's a full improvement of Auburn Street. That's scheduled for on their, it's called their transportation improvement project list for 2021, and we had a meeting either last week or the week prior with our engineer, including our town engineer and several other folks in town, to try to promote some of the ideas of this into that transportation improvement plan. That included widening the sidewalks, looking at some of the traffic lanes, and given the space that we have, what can we use to promote different areas? Where would the ornamental lighting go? Which side? Where would the wider sidewalk go based on the existing layout? Where do you want the crosswalks to be, et cetera? So some of those strategies have already been poured into one of our projects so far.
Through the chair, it's exciting to see what we can potentially do now that we have a blueprint for moving forward, and as Matt said, we did have a good meeting. Several of us were in that meeting, or quite a few of us, looking at it from the perspective of this plan, and how do you implement the strategies in this plan now while we're in the preliminary design? We're not even at 25%, very preliminary, so it's not too late to make changes to some of the things, like Matt said, the widening of sidewalks, narrowing certain sections of the road, looking at sidewalk treatments, you know, a brick look or a stone look, and just enhance the look of the area and make it safe for pedestrians and vehicles. So the engineer was extremely open to our ideas, and is getting back to us every day, sending us different pictures and things to look at and things to consider. So by the time this goes forward, hopefully, as you said, 2021, it will be in place to implement some of the ideas here. So everything has to be coordinated together. We just can't put the plan out there and hope it happens. You've got to ensure that all the work that's taking place follows what the plan is hoping to accomplish.
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, I also had the opportunity to attend that meeting, and something that, you know, that I took away from that meeting that I'm optimistic and hopeful for, that you discussed, was moving retail businesses closer to the street, making a more walkable area. So there wasn't a lot of, you know, we didn't get into a lot of detail that night. How do you ensure that, like, that process isn't overlooked? Does it, is it making sure zoning is in place? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure.
Because I think that's a key component to, for the downtown area. I mean, I see a place going up on Chutesbury Street right now, and, you know, the storefront is almost to the sidewalk, and then the parking and the lower grade of the building is in the back, and it just, it just fits and it works.
Sure.
And, you know, that's what, that's what they're doing on Chutesbury Street. I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on how you would move forward with that.
Well, thank you, and to the chairman, that's a very important question, and some of the questions we heard at town meeting is, I'll put this in a very basic sense, you can't just pick up a building and move it the way you want it, so what you have to do is zone that according to, not necessarily to use, but to its dimensional regulations, and to ensure that parking isn't put out in front of the building, as it always has been in the past. At least, there's never been control over that. So if you put a control measure where parking must be located behind it, or you take restrictions away from parking that allows you to co-locate parking between businesses, there's other ways to explore that, and some of the strategies in here will help us realize those goals. As far as zoning and uses, of course, none of the businesses that are there now could be affected by this if they choose not to make any amendments, they'd be grandfathered no matter what. They're, this is for, maybe you're looking at future development, where you can govern the new uses, how they go in. We're talking, this could be a 50-year realization, but as long as the protocol's in place to make it happen, that's what we're looking to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Bertheum.
I was just going over the, when is the, so the cleanup part can start pretty much anytime, because that's regular DPW and resources that we already have. The $10,000 grant, that wouldn't be used for any of that cleanup part, is that correct?
That's correct. The grant was used towards this study, it's technical assistance funding. Regarding the DPW, I believe the town manager probably answered that, but I know most of it's private property.
Right. The town, on private property, obviously can't go on and do some of the cleanup, so it's working with the property owners. Some of the strategies in here are to potentially work with a group of business owners and maybe form an association, where they work together and they do joint promotions, they do joint programs and events. But the, some of the issues will be able to be addressed in this roadwork plan that we were just talking about, because if we can have state funding coming in to help redesign the road and rebuild the road, then that's the opportunity to build, and we talked about planters, we talked about trees. We're trying to get as much as we can out of the state part of the project, so we know what the local expenditures are going to be. Some of the issues with regard to the park, we already have been doing what we can. Some of the issues that are more expensive, we need additional funding for. It is another item, but I'll mention it because it ties into this, but the planning board did just approve the, to send along to the annual town meeting, the revised bylaw for the regional mall over way district that all of you unanimously supported, as did the planning board. And if that gets approved by town meeting, there is a potential fund, there is a funding stream once those billboards get up from the developer, who would be paying the town a certain amount of money, and it is our recommendation that we use some of those dollars to start doing some of the implementation on this project. And that could be banners, it could be the planters, we're trying to make sure we need ornamental lighting. The ornamental lighting would allow us to put special lights, we could put planters, we could put signs, so all of that is a potential funding source. Seasonal.
So right now, pretty much what the town can work with is the area by the fire station, the pond, the park, then really not much, I mean, maybe the tennis courts, but then nothing except for then the high school. Everything else is private business at this point. So that's what we, that's our first primary focus, is what the plan is going to start to clean up, and then see what we have for funding sources afterwards. Is that what I'm understanding?
Right, we do have some, we had applied for a Mass Works grant that would have provided for some of this work down along the Brotherton Way component of this, and we did not get that. We're going to apply again next year, so if that comes through, that's a funding source that will provide for the Auburn Street in through along the pond over near the library. Depending on how this project goes with, with the vote at town meeting in May, and how quickly those billboards could get erected, if that is the case, we could have funding coming in right away. We have been working a lot on the park already. We had, the Rotary Club has donated benches, they've done some cleanup, they've been working to help, initially, they were the ones that actually helped keep the park maintained and planted, and they've been great, so we're working with them. We wanted to wait until this is done, obviously, see what the priorities are. But I think the priorities will follow the funding as well. So if the funding is there for the Brotherton Road, that's how we'll fund Brotherton Road. Then we can take our resources and put them where we can't get a grant. But we are always looking for funding sources. We'd like to repair the clutter, the rocket and the fountain and the lights in there. We think we can do a lot with the pond. We think we can encourage the use of that pond for more community use and have, have it cleaned up. There is a cost to that, but we think that we can do that with the donations that might be coming in.
Okay. Mr. Carpenter?
Got a question, see if we have the accountant here. On the facade proposal, how would that work from a town perspective? How would we budget for that? Is it planned that we would budget for this, or is this something else?
If I could jump in, I think the facade, the intent was to potentially work with local lenders and the credit union and the local banks to see if they would establish a facade program. Other communities have put together facade improvement programs where they make conventional, institutional loans available at a lower interest rate and make smaller loans available because some facade work doesn't take a lot of money, but it's hard to get a smaller loan. So when we just talked about it at several of these meetings, at that time, there was no talk of putting town money into it. That's not something that we couldn't consider doing down the road, but that wasn't one of the recommendations. It was to try to get a facade improvement program started with some of the local banks to lend, you know, sometimes they have lending programs that are stepped where they'll give $500, and then if you pay that back and you can do the work, they'll give you another $2,000 and you can do some signage. So there's all kinds of different models that we can look at. We would just like to get some type of program available to have some more consistent facade treatments. And again, as Matt said, for those businesses that don't want to participate or aren't able to do that now, there's no, there's no penalty for that. This is really looking to the future. And, you know, if businesses want to participate now, we want to help them. And as businesses leave and new businesses come in, we want to make the new businesses come in, hopefully have some incentive to go forward. So we're not looking for town funds right now.
And just one last thing about the roadway grant that we're looking at. You mentioned that that was going to be from the Yangsheng area down across the street. I think it would be important to include the Winchester Insurance, even though it's further up the street. They've really been a big part of the town and I think been very helpful with the town. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see something start at Yangsheng and not include that little area. It's the only other business that's on, in that area. So just, you know, point of reference when you're thinking of things, I really think that that should, on the other side, be included in any plans that, that are proposed.
Through the chair, we can look at that. This is a state-funded project, so the state engineers determine the location of where the state dollars are. So it may be included now. I'm not, I don't want to say it's not, it could be. And if it's not, we can talk to the engineer to see what the process would be to get that section included. Because that's a great point. It may already be in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Furthermore, through the chair, to answer that.
Please.
That business is located in our proposed Jury Square area.
Thank you. Okay. Has anybody got anything else?
Great job.
Awesome.
Thanks, Matt.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, me too.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you very much.
I want to thank Matt, too. He, he's done a really good job on this, and a lot of the department heads have participated in this, you know, DPW, as you can see, ideas from everybody really make a big difference, but Matt shepherded it through, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Okay.
So through the chair, if maybe if you take F, we just reference it, and then we could just dismiss it.
Sure, absolutely. Can we move up 5F?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I just, I thought it would be appropriate to just state now. So there is a letter in your packet from the planning board, well, it's actually from Matt, on behalf of the planning board, just letting you know, we wanted to give you the status update on that because you were kind enough to pass it along to the planning board to take action on. And they concurred with your recommendation. They had a very good meeting, and they unanimously approved it 4 to 0. They, they're very supportive of it and felt that the presentation that they were given was appropriate. So just wanted to let you know that that did happen. It will be on a, the annual town meeting warrant. Obviously, it wasn't in time for a special town meeting. We weren't looking to do that, that quickly. So it will be on the annual town meeting. And again, there is a donation that would be made to the town from the, from the developer slash company. If this goes through, a $50,000 a year, well, $25,000 a year for each billboard that gets erected, and they were a maximum of two, so $50,000 a year for 20 years, with $250,000 payable upfront. And it had been brought
That's significant.
To their attention. Correct. I know this board, when they came here, a member of the board had asked if they would look into adding any type of an increment to that. And they looked at it and came back and said that they feel that the donation is very generous as it stands, and that they were going to stay with that donation. We are thrilled with the donation.
That's awesome.
It, it was worth the question, but.
Absolutely. Well, thank you.
Getting you more.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions or any comments on that? Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Mr. Carpenter.
I just see a dot.
Not particularly on this, but I see the planners here, and he was mentioning that there's some, some potential zoning bylaws that are going to go for the regular town meeting. I didn't know if we could get a sneak peek of what the zoning committee might be bringing forward. I don't know if that would be appropriate or not.
It's not on our agenda for tonight, and I don't know if he's prepared, but I will. Through Ms. Jacobson, is that something we can do tonight?
You can't have debate on it, but if, if, we pretty much know what's going to be coming forward because we've already been working with them. So I'm sure it's fine for him to just say what that is, but I wouldn't have any discussion about it.
If you come forward, just, you know.
I would just do it as an informational.
Yep. Please.
Sure. Through the chairman, there are some minor amendments to the bylaws based on a recommendation from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. They looked at our flood rate insurance maps, and based on a case that was being reviewed by the building commissioner, and they noticed a couple of things that were missing, at least just updates from our bylaws. So there's some small changes there. It's updating a date of the map, and then I cite, I reference to building code. One of the other items is a proposed moratorium for recreational marijuana uses. We did a moratorium in the past for the registered medical marijuana dispensary, dispensaries, having now passed a bylaw at a previous town meeting for that. We're looking to start the same process again, but this time for the recreational use until state comes up with legislation for us on how to govern it. Excuse me. And there's one other item on there for electric vehicle charging stations. It's absent from our bylaw. I'll be looking to put that as an accessory use in our bylaws. I believe that's everything.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Okay. All right. We have no communications tonight. Under 5B, we have the fiscal year 2018 budget and vote to transmit to the Finance Committee in accordance with the town charter and the bylaws. So I guess we'll entertain any questions, any continuance? Okay. I do, I had a chance to take a look at it, and it appears that the school department has come forward, and from what I can see, the numbers, correct me if I'm wrong, is a four and a half percent increase in their budget. That's pretty significant, and I believe there are some positions in that. So along with the positions, it comes to the town side where we are paying benefits and health insurance costs, and that could be a little bit of a strain on our budget also on our side. So I'm hoping that the Finance Committee will actually get a chance to take a good look at that and find out if there's any wiggle room, if there's any way to absorb some of the costs, or if they can take a look at their budget and see if they can fine-tune a little bit. It's just something that I'd taken a look at. I know that the town is looking at, over the past years, they've looked at some personnel and bring them on board, and I think it's definitely a worthwhile venture. The schools have, in the past years, had several employees coming forward, but I think with a four and a half percent increase in the budget, I think it's pretty significant. So I hope the Finance Committee takes a good look at that and asks some questions to find out whereabouts they are and how they might be able to help the town side. Yeah, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you to the town accountant. Ed, is it customary for the town to absorb all of the fringe benefits in a town line item? Is that, in your professional experiences, is that something that they could carry in their budget so that the actual budget would reflect their costs, or is that not?
I would say, through the chair, I would say today it's very common to have one shared line item under employee benefits, although I can tell you, years ago, in my early accounting days, it was common to have the school department carry their own fringe line item, but that seemed to be outdated in terms of today's accounting standards.
If I could just follow up, Mr. Chin.
Sure.
We have a gain of six positions on the school side.
Correct.
I know in years past, there's been new positions, but they've traded off certain other positions, so it's not really six. I haven't had a chance to get too deep into the budget. I really was waiting to see the Finance Committee process, which is what I did last year. They ask, you know, they're the experts, so I figure I better listen to them before I generate any concepts, but.
As I understand it, it's a net gain of six.
Okay. All right. My only concern is we have 16 new positions, and, you know, I know the, this past year, we had a lot of concerns from residents about their tax bills. I'm certainly not saying that these 16 positions aren't needed. I know we've asked a lot of the staff over the many years that we've been kind of crunching the numbers and asking them to bear a little more burden than possible. But I agree with the chair. I think we, we really do need to hold the line on, on spending. You know, I don't want to deprive anybody of a quality education, but I do know that we have, that it does hamper other property or other departments because we can't fund them or staff them in a way. We just had a big project with the Jury Square. There might be additional staffing required there. There's additional expenses. If we want swimming programs, if we want these type of things, we really do need to keep a close eye, which I know the town accountant is doing, but I just wanted to share the chairman's concern that, that is quite a leap. What has been the traditional over the last three years? What is their average per year of going up?
I would say in the vicinity of 2%, 1.75 to maybe like 2.25, my recollection. I can provide those numbers to you, actual numbers.
Right.
But just to put this in summary form, the total budget increase, schools, including town, is a blended 2.91% increase. It utilizes approximately just shy of 1%, 0.95% of the total allowable two and a half, allowable growth under Proposition 2 and 1/2, which leaves about $645,000 surplus revenue over expense that will be allowed to go back in some form of relief to the taxpayers of the community, provided that the numbers hold where they are today. Certainly, we got one set of numbers from the governor's budget. Hopefully, those numbers will hold. Auburn fared very well under the governor's proposed budget, but we have two sets of numbers still to consider, and that's why we don't want to commit any portion of that 600 at this point in time.
Just follow up with one more question. Is there something driving these six positions? Is there, is there a defined need, whether it be through the, somebody, individual IPs? Is there just a general need because the population is anticipated growing? What is, what is driving the six positions?
I think it's special needs driven. Quite honestly, we were just informed after we submitted the budget initially that required the school committee to meet again in emergency session to consider their budget. They have $560,000 of outside placement costs that became known to them after they voted their first budget. So their first budget that we received was up 3% as a result of those additional costs. It's now up 4 and 1/2%.
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to make a general comment about the budget in general, you know, specifically to the town manager and the CFO. Once again, and I, I've been on the board since we implemented them, I'm not sure what year it was, but, you know, I just have to comment again the importance of votes we've taken in the past to support the financial policies. They're working. They're looked at from other communities. I know that our rating agency used our financial model for other municipalities. When our auditor was in here, he mentioned the financial policies and bringing them to other communities. You know, we continue to make significant contributions to our OPEB liability, which there are still, which I can't believe, communities who are barely funding it or who have opened the account but haven't made a deposit. You know, and even with adding the 16 new positions, we're at .95. And, I mean, that just says so much about the management of the town's funds. I just, I congratulate both of you on that. And one last comment is the notice on the, the increase of the snow and ice fund. You don't have to do that by law, and we know many communities do it. You play with that snow and ice fund because you don't have to fund it, because you know you can, you can get the money later. But you still increased and still held the line on the other items. So although there's some concerns with an increase on the school side, I just, I'm going to comment on the municipal side and say, just, you know, Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, Town Administration, Town Department Heads, all working together to present a budget at .95 and still have free cash is incredible, and I congratulate you for implementing these financial policies.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Goodrich. Has anybody got anything else? Have you got anything else from your side? Okay. All right, then, being done, we have to take a vote on this to transmit the budget to the Finance Committee.
Chairman, I'll make a vote, I'll make a motion that we transmit this budget to the Finance Committee.
Second. Okay. Motion made, second to transmit to the Finance Committee, fiscal year 2018 budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And their first meeting is Wednesday this week, March 1st, here in this room, 7:00. We have no proclamations tonight. Discussion on our March meeting schedule. We have, well, I am going to be absent for our next meeting. Our next meeting is going to be the 13th, I believe, and then the following meeting is going to be two weeks after that, which will be on the 27th. I don't know how everybody's schedule is with that. We've had an executive session for discussions, and would like to have another executive session on the 20th, if that be possible, if everybody's available for the 20th, have an executive session to continue our talks and get this communication completed. Mrs. Goodrich.
I don't have a calendar in front of me, so, so March 13th and 27th are our regularly scheduled meetings.
Yes.
And we just, we have a town meeting on March 28th, which is a Tuesday.
Correct.
So we're looking at an executive session on the 20th?
Yes.
Could we, could we do regular business on the 20th if, if there's anything? And then if there's anything left over, have a meeting prior, you know, we
Just before town meeting.
We often have a meeting and just skip the 27th completely?
I have no problem with that. That sounds feasible for me.
I generally like visuals with dates.
Yeah. So you're talking about having our second meeting for the month on the 20th instead of having it on the 27th? And then if there's anything pending before town meeting, we can meet just prior to town meeting on the 28th?
Even if it's not town meeting related, I mean, if anything comes up that the board needs to take action on, we could take it, take it up on the 28th rather than having a meeting two nights in a row.
Okay. That sounds great to me. I don't know how it is for the rest of the board.
I'll move, I'll move appointments.
It's, I'm just waiting to hear from, that schedule goes along with me. I'm just waiting to hear from the rest of the board members and see if the 20th for an executive session and a regular board meeting.
I know we have no cell phone use, but can I just look at my calendar, please?
Absolutely.
My purse is under you because we moved down. I just want to make sure that. I don't have an actual.
No, I'm just thinking as far as, I was thinking if we did it on the 20th, if we did it at 7:00 and then had our regular meeting the following week, that probably would work better for me personally. But.
Have what on the 20th?
Just have the executive session, but have it for 7:00.
Well, could.
I mean, if people want to have.
Could we have executive session and have a meeting after that, or have the regular meeting? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I, I sometimes think out loud. What if we were to have a meeting on the 20th and have executive session at the end of the meeting?
We were talking about having council there, so I wouldn't want
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't want to incur that kind of expense.
No, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
But no.
Well, if we did executive session, I don't know how long it would be. We could still just post it and make people aware that we might not come out of executive session till 7:30. If we have a hearing or whatever, we could schedule for after 7:30. Would that help your schedule?
I'm confused as to what you're even saying now. We still talking about the 20th?
The 20th have.
So the 20th executive session and then have a meeting afterwards?
It just, yeah. Which we, we don't even know if we'll have items.
That will work. I'll make it work.
Okay. So March 20th at 7:00, we have executive session, and then resume our meeting at 7:30 if there's anything on the agenda. if there's anything on the agenda. What time is the executive session? 7:00.
7:00 executive.
Is that better than 6:00 for you?
No, actually, earlier is better, so don't make it later on my part. You can make it 5:30 and have our meeting at 7:00 if you want, but I don't know. Do you need it? Can you make that work, Dan?
I can't.
You can. So we'll go 7:00, so we'll go 7:00 and then Have our regular meeting after that with whatever items are on the agenda. And then for the following week, if there's anything that does come up, we'll have a meeting just prior to town meeting on the 28th instead of having our meeting on the 27th Monday.
So we're not having a meeting on March 27th?
No, there probably won't be a call for that.
Okay. So the 20th at 7:00 PM, executive session, then to go into open session, and then the 28th?
Just prior to town meeting if there's anything going on.
6:30? Because we have to say it, right?
We can let you know if there are any items prior to that because it might have to be at 6:00, we'll save a couple of items. If there are none, then 6:30 would be fine.
Okay, is everybody okay with that? We can pass that along to Mrs. Brathwaite.
Do you need a motion on that? I believe, well, you should probably do a motion.
Yeah, probably. So if you'll make that motion?
I'll make the motion to schedule as just discussed.
Okay. Sharon, have you got that?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion
Motion made.
The motion made, seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, 26A, town manager items. We, first, we have a letter from Attorney Robert Hennigan regarding 12 and 15 Upland Street, and I'll turn this over to Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, there's a letter in your packet, as you can see, dated February 17th, from Attorney and Town Council Robert Hennigan, related to 12 and 15 Upland Street. This is as a result of the board's request on December 12th at your meeting to ask town council to investigate if it's possible to amend a deed on public property, to place a deed restriction on it and what that process would be. So that letter is in your packets. I know you've all had a chance to see it. Just to summarize it, rather than reading the entire letter, although I'm happy to do so, but to summarize it, as you can see from the first paragraph, first of all, this is the second letter that we've received from town council on this topic. The first letter was dated December 6th, which then prompted the board to have this discussion and take a vote on the 12th to go back for a further definition. So according to town council, it is not possible to either amend or correct the deed. The deed is the deed because it followed the exact town meeting vote, which is the legal vote that was taken back in 1980. The deed was then turned over to the town on May 7th, 1980. Attorney Hennigan has opined in both letters that the process was correctly followed and the deed was correctly recorded. So the deed cannot be changed. The second question that you had was whether it's possible to place a deed restriction on it and what that process would be. Yes, it is possible to place a deed restriction on town-owned property. That process is to get a town meeting vote. With that being said, specific to 12 and 15 Upland Street, which is the pack of golf course property, the, any deed restriction that would be sought at town meeting would have to be in keeping with the terms of the water, land and water conservation grant that was received by the town back in some 37 years ago, and that requires that the land be used, which is, it's a use, as recreation and passive recreation. And the grant documents specified it could be year-round, there were a number of things that fall into that category. It could be an expansion of the golf course. It could be walking trails, hiking trails, horseback riding. It could be a field, it could be a playground. There are a number of things that were identified. It has to be outdoor space, and it has to be recreation, and definition meaning passive recreation. So you're not going to see a structure there. So if, if a group wanted to go to town meeting petition to have a deed restriction, they could do so, but again, that deed restriction would have to be for passive recreation. It cannot be for conservation or for open space.
Okay, I think with these two letters we have, I think this second opinion, the second time go around, I think he's made it abundantly clear that these restrictions can't be changed on the deed, and I think that should be enough of disclosure to the public for any questions that may be coming down the road. Passive recreation seems to be it, and there could be other things going on, so that's our second opinion. And again, I think it's abundantly clear that Mr. Hennigan, our counsel, has performed his duties well and has explained exactly what's going on, so I think that we should be able to move along from this. Is any questions or comments? Okay. Being none?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kapner.
No, I just wanted to express my thanks for the board pursuing this. I know there were some questions of the residents. I think this is a good point for them to at least know that we're being, we continue to be responsive. You know, we had, we had so many public hearings, we heard their comments, they had additional comments, and we were still responsive, so I appreciate that because that's what we're here for, and it was done in a very professional manner, which I appreciate as well on both sides of the divide, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, being nothing else, we'll move on to 6B, is vote on authorizing the application and acceptance of information technology grant funds for permitting software.
Through the chair, I would like to ask your approval, just as far on the agenda, the March meeting schedule, wasn't sure where we were going to go with that as far as meetings, but there is a grant that's opening up on the state. It's called the Community Compact IT Grant Program, and it's only available to communities that have been designated as a community compact, which we have, so it is still a competitive grant, and the state has made, I believe, $2 million available with a maximum grant amount of $200,000 for any one municipality. Last year, we applied for it and didn't receive it. This grant round is open only to those who did not receive grant funding last year and only to those who are compact communities. It's still competitive because there are a lot of communities that are compact communities and a lot didn't get the grant. So the grant actually opens tomorrow, and I believe the due date is March 23rd, so didn't want to potentially wait to let you know about it. I can tell you that what we're trying to do, and I can give you the estimate of what we're looking at. We've put a lot of work and a lot of time and research into it, and I want to thank the IT director and Caleb, our building commissioner, and Darlene Coyle, the department head, for all the work that they've done on this. But we have been looking at potentially buying, which fits with the grant, a software program to expand upon a program we already have to do online permitting for building permits and everything related to building permits, as well as another module which will tie into that for animal control, for dog licensing, and then yet another model for board of health permits, so food permits and things like that. The intent would be to get this onto our system so that the public, it eases it for the public, it makes it much easier for them to do this. It's very complicated to get it set up. The grant will cover the initial setup and the initial software. It would not cover the ongoing maintenance, but we believe that the ongoing maintenance is absolutely worth the effort. The reports that you can generate from this is just, it's incredible. It will ultimately save a lot of staff time on our end and be much more user-friendly to the residents. We've looked at other communities that received grants last year to try to see if this is something the state would support, and quite a few communities did put in for this type of software and were funded for it. And we have reached out to a number of those communities that did get funding to ask them if they'd be kind enough to share their applications with us so we can see what they may have focused on and what might have caught the eye of those who were reviewing the grants. So it seems like a great thing to do. It would, again, it would just make it easier for the user. They could track their own application, they could pay online. It would prevent applications from being submitted on our end that aren't complete. It doesn't allow you to go forward if the application isn't complete and there's something missing, so the person filing it knows right immediately that they still owe additional information as opposed to waiting until it gets to the review process. So I think it would expedite on all levels the getting of, issuing of permits. So the total dollar amount right now, and the dollar amount that came in today was about, was a little bit shy of $31,000. Again, it's an estimate. We had a long meeting last week, I think it was three hours that we spent with the group that would be putting this module in, People GIS, which we already have, and we asked for a couple of additional pieces, which is why we don't have a final amount, because we felt it was worth pursuing to see if we can put these additional components into it. So we're estimating $31,000. It would, it will likely come in less than that, but I would be very surprised if it can be more than that. We're trying to keep the grant request under $40,000. We feel that with $2 million available to some 200 communities, you know, we really just need to be as rigid as we can with the cost. So what I wanted to do tonight was to explain to you what we're doing, why we're trying to do it, and to ask for you to vote to allow us to apply for the funds. I can get back to you at a later date with the final grant amount, and we didn't have it tonight. I wasn't sure what your meeting schedule was, but I would say at this point, the grant, I think it would be fair to vote to allow us to apply for and accept grants of approximately $31,000, and that way it might be less.
Mr. Brathwaite. So $31,000 includes the purchase of the software and the implementation of the software?
Does, and it also includes training, a training component for all staff who are using it.
And that is provided by the company that has already installed the existing software? So is there anything in there for our IT? Because there'll obviously be, you know, time required by our IT people.
That's not an eligible expense under the grant. The grant is for purchase of one-time software or equipment, and it does include implementation and training, but it does not include reimbursement for any staff time that goes into it.
And who determines the, the cost of the implementation and training? Is that the
People GIS.
People GIS has given you a quota already for that?
Yes, yes, and they are on the state bid list. They have provided this service, I'm going to say, to over 20 communities so far, potentially even more, but we did see a list of about 20 communities that they've done this with, and they actually came in and did a phenomenal demonstration the other day where they pulled up different communities and showed us how this system worked and how you can walk through it. And again, I think the benefit of, the number one benefit is it's a good thing for the community. It's good for the residents, it's good for the developers, but on our end, it's also good for reporting. We can track things so much better. We can generate great reports to be able to keep everybody informed as to what kind of activity we have, including our monitoring agencies on board, the finance committee. So the grant is specific, however, that it will not pay for recurring costs or existing staff time. So our IT director has put time into this, as has, again, Darlene, Caleb, Matt, myself, Bill Coyle. It affects every department, I'm sorry, assessing, it affects assessing because they can go in and they'll be able to get the building permit information faster and go out and capture the new growth as those permits are submitted online. So, and the treasure collector's office. So there's probably not one department in town that isn't involved in this somehow.
Mr. Kapner?
That was one of my questions, as we have other departments who do inspections, is this simply, we're just going to have building inspectors or building permit information, or are we going to have plans or something? So if the fire department has to go through and do something, they could pull up a plan with this software, or they couldn't?
Right now, the fire department has their own software that does do all of that and does all of their inspections and permitting, and that can be integrated into this, but it's still a separate system because they're tied into a different state system, is my understanding. So they can access the system, but they already have that in place. So this would be, rather than duplicating what they already have and paying for another module that we don't need, we focus this one on building. So this would be gas, plumbing, electric, building permits, animal permits, health, public health, any permits, food permits, well permits, and there were some DPW street opening permits as well. Again, we just met the other day and gave a wish list of some of the other modules that we're waiting to get a price on, depending on what comes back. We think it's a great system. If it comes back and it's all manageable, then we would incorporate it all into one grant. We want to have as much as we can
No, I think it's great.
Getable to the public.
No, I think it's great to computerize it. I know the planner had mentioned previous, in previous discussions about that. The only other thing is, can this be accessed remotely? Will they have tablets as they go out and do their inspections?
That's a good question. What we're also applying for, because equipment is allowed under the grant, we're applying for three iPads that will be hooked into this system because the, the best way to utilize this system is from the field. It saves time, so as your inspectors are in the field, they can actually be in the field putting the information in. Right now, there is not a, an iPhone module from People GIS, but they are working on developing that, and there may be one probably a year down the road. Until that is on the phone, we need iPads. So conservatively, we're looking at three. We thought one for the building division, one for the DPW division, and one for the health division. We're looking at that again to see if we're putting in for enough, but it's the way to go. When you have inspectors out in the field, it saves time, they don't have to come back here, put the information out, and go back out again. So we are putting in for that.
Just one more question. The WADA districts in town, would they have any need or have any right to access this as they go about their work? I know they're not part of the town, per se, but obviously, we work with them, and there are needs.
As always, if they've had a question for us, we always pull up whatever information they need. Would they have access to it? No, the administrators would be town employees, and even that, we're, we have to decide who would be actually licensed to go in and access the information because you have to be careful that by mistake, it doesn't get changed. So they'll be specified users, just like there are a number of our other programs, and then we can provide any reports that they need down the road if they were interested in doing something with it, and there was a component that was specific to them, I'm sure we could look at that.
Okay. Mr. Brathwaite? Just a comment, I mean, I think it's definitely all in the right direction, and I don't think there's any need for us to put in approximate. I think we should just accept it as, let them put whatever price they feel is right. You know, to say approximately 31 and then have them think that they can come in at 42, I don't want to put a price. I think we should just accept whatever they want to propose.
That would be great. Thank you. We did try to have that number for you this evening, but it just, there were too many pieces.
I don't think it's necessary for us to have that. I think that, you know, we trust that you're comparing it to other towns and, you know, seeing what we can, hopefully give us our best chance of getting the grant. So, I mean, if we can get the max and you think we have a good shot at it, I think you should go for it. And if you're going to make that in the form of a motion? I would make a motion that we vote on authorizing the application and acceptance of information technology grant funds for permitting software. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Now we go to C, it's update on the status of requests for proposals for Mary D. and JB.
Through the chair, I'm just checking the date on this. Thank you. Sorry. So we did want to let the public know that we have issued the request for proposals, or RFPs, two separate ones, for the Mary D. Stone Elementary School and the Julia Bancroft Elementary School. Each RFP has two components, per the discussion amongst the board and the advisory group that looked at this for quite some time. So a bidder can bid on a long-term lease or can bid on a purchase. So there was one RFP per school, but there were two components to it. If you go in with a lease, you fill out a certain amount of documentation. If you go in with a purchase, you fill out a certain amount of documentation. Those were put in the central register in accordance with Mass General law, chapter 33D. That went into the central register last Wednesday, and then on Thursday, we released the RFPs. They are on our website. There's a banner on our website, and you can click on that and click on the RFPs. We did do a lot of research and looked into other towns to see which towns might have put similar older school buildings out to bid at some point in the last couple of years and what firms bid on them and redeveloped them so they have some experience. And I think we identified six such firms, and we sent the RFP for all, to all of those firms. We also have been maintaining a list of people who've contacted our office over the last few months, who said when it's issued, please send us a copy, so we've sent it to them. We have a sign-in sheet in our office, and I wanted to let you know the reason for that is, rather than putting the entire RFP on the website, we've put the, we've put the announcement of the RFP. You need to track who's picked up the RFP, because if you make any addendums, at any point, you need to contact anyone who picked it up, so they all barely have the same information on the addendum. So we can't just put it out there and let anyone download it and have it on their own because then we have no way to get in touch with them if any dates change, if anything changes. So they can call us, and we can email it to them. We just need to have contact information. So we do have a list if they come into the office and pick it up, or they can call our office at 832-7720 and ask for a copy of the RFP, either electronically or emailed. The deadline for The deadline for submission is April 14th, I believe at 12 o'clock noon. And I hope I have that correct. And there is a walkthrough that is also scheduled in March. And I apologize, I don't have the date of that walkthrough. I believe it's March 16th. I'm pretty sure it's March 16th and we have walkthrough. But all of that information is in the packet. It's on the website. And the walkthrough provides an opportunity for anyone who's interested and picked up the bid and had questions to come and actually walk through physically the building with Joe Fahy from the schools because he was the one that maintained all the buildings through their life. And on our end, the town planer and the building commissioner will do the walkthrough. And all questions, you know, under the Chapter 30B, all questions have to be submitted in writing to the town. And then the town has to respond with the answer to everybody who took out the RFP. Again, that's why we have to track this. So we're excited about it. We hope that we get a lot of interest in it and that we're hoping that we get some good quality proposals to look at mid-April.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. We move on to 6D, and that's creation of a housing subcommittee.
Yes. Through the chair, I just want to also give the public to know and for you as well, the -- I mentioned at the last meeting that we did award the grant for the housing plan to be developed to CMRPC. They were the bidder in consent with a consultant who does a lot of housing plan development. And it was their recommendation, and we agree that it's a good recommendation, to have a housing subcommittee, preferably of the master plan committee. Because you really need to have a subcommittee that can help work with the consultants and guide this process. It shouldn't just be done by outside consultants. It should be outside consultants, listening to the input of the residents as to what the needs are of the community. So we are through Matt Pnoit, the town planner. He has gone to the master plan committee. And I believe they may be putting together a subcommittee, but we're going to be looking for additional residents to sit on that committee. The master plan committee, it's hard. They have a lot of work on their plate. And to ask them to take on another committee and another whole set of meetings so maybe they can appoint one or two of their members to the housing subcommittee. And then we'd like to get some additional residents. So we did advertise for availability of seats on the housing subcommittee a couple of weeks ago. I think it was shortly after your last board meeting when we went forward with this. So just want to put a reminder out to the residents that we are looking for residents to apply for this. It will be a short-lived committee in the development of the plan. The plan will start now. We are asking the state to give us an extension on the plan so we have enough time to do it. Right now, it needs to be done by June 30th, but they told us that if we make the request that they would entertain an extension, which they realize there's a lot of work to be done. So we're requesting an extension to September 30th. I'm sending that letter in tomorrow. So really, we're looking at probably a six-month process to get the plan developed. After that is implementation, but then that probably turns more toward, you know, an ongoing master plan committee for ongoing implementation once it's done. So really, it would be time-consuming for six months, but after that, you'll have a product. And hopefully the housing subcommittee, we don't have to meet as often. Maybe they meet once a year and take a look at the plan and see if it's being implemented. We can talk about it. So we are looking for residents who are interested in serving.
Okay. Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. We have no tabled items. Has anybody from the board got anything?
Actually, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I just -- I have one thing that wasn't on there, just a quick note. Because I just -- it just came in today. So and it's good information. Just wanted to know that our fire chief, Steve Coleman, he just completed his re-credentia process. As you probably know or recall, he is a chief fire officer, so CFO, not to be confused with our CFO. We have two CFOs. So he is the chief fire officer. And he had to go through a process of doing this re-credentia. And we're really proud because there are only 1,210 CFOs worldwide. And in Massachusetts, there were only 16. And one is our fire chief. So we're really proud of him and honored that he serves this community and that he does it so well and that he's put a lot of time into this professional certification and designation. There's a lot of work involved in this, as two of you know from your service to the fire community. It does require a lot of work. And he's also been asked to be a speaker at next month's the Center for Public Safety Excellence, which works with those getting this designation, has asked him to speak at their annual conference. So that's quite an honor for him and for the town of Auburn. So I want to congratulate him.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Has anybody got anything else? Okay. We have no public comments tonight. We have some minutes from December 12, 2016. Then I get ready comments, questions, errors, omissions.
Good job.
Yes, well done. Being none, I'll accept them as presented. And geez, I got one more piece of paper with -- oh, it says adjourn on it. I'll make a move. Second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you and good night.